Seven point two. Discussion and direction regarding City Council Subcommittee for Advisory Body Reviews, recommending changes to city advisory bodies.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Debbie Elam. You're acting, excuse me, you're acting city clerk. Tonight, the item before you is the City Council Subcommittee's Recommendations Regarding the Advisory Body Review. The City of Livermore currently has nine standing advisory bodies that work at the pleasure of the City Council. The city created a five-year strategic plan earlier this year, and one goal is to engage effectively with advisory bodies. Under that goal includes the project of reviewing all advisory bodies to ensure alignment with the strategic plan and other guiding documents in council direction. In March of this year, city clerk staff started meeting with advisory body liaisons to review each body's rule of procedure, which includes duties, responsibilities, and objectives. In July of this year, the City Council appointed a two-member Subcommittee for Advisory Body Review, which includes Vice Mayor Kik and Councilmember Branning. In August, staff presented the results of their review to the Subcommittee. In October, the Subcommittee finalized their review and directed staff to bring back the Subcommittee's recommendations to council. The four main Subcommittee recommendations are to sunset the beautification committee, to sunset the historical preservation commission, to move the oversight of the Commission for the Arts from Innovation and Economic Development Department to the library, and to convert the Livermore Area Youth Advisory Commission, also known as LIAC, from a city commission to a library activity. The recommendation to sunset the beautification committee was based on several factors. First, many of the duties the committee was originally responsible for have fallen to staff due to the need for technical expertise. For example, review of designs for landscape areas or tree choices are handled by staff with professional expertise, such as a planner or an arborist. Next, some advisory objectives are no longer current. For example, the Free Street Tree program ended over fifteen years ago. Although not listed as a duty or responsibility in the rules of procedure, the beautification committee is listed in the municipal code as the body to hear street tree appeals. Staff in conjunction with the city attorney's office are in the process of updating the process for appeals citywide. An option staff is considering is having an independent third party hear street tree appeals, similar to neighborhood preservation appeals. If council decides to sunset the beautification committee, staff confirmed that the Arbor Day and Beautification Awards would continue with public work staff and volunteers. In addition, opportunities for the public to provide input on city landscaping and trees could occur through Planning Commission or City Council. The city values its historic properties, and over the years, the Historic Preservation Committee has completed very important work, preserving properties such as the Railroad Depot and preserving Livermore history by approving plaques that outline the historical significance of properties. In conjunction with the Historic Preservation Commission, staff created a historic context statement and inventory of city parcels for historic significance, revised the certificate of appropriateness standards, and updated the development code, zoning map, and downtown specific plan to ensure the preservation of historical properties. The new policies related to historical properties reduce the number of projects that require historical review either by staff or by the commission. Properties that would require review are now based on potential historical significance, as opposed to simply being over fifty years old for some. In the past, a larger portion of properties required a review due to age. In future years of the strategic plan, there could be an additional review of the remaining properties that could reduce the number even further. Due to the limited number of projects brought before the commission, there's only been a need for the body to meet five times since 2021, when the new policies went into effect. The commission did not meet in 2023. If the city decides to sunset the commission, the review of historical properties and the interview of the city historian could be assigned to the Planning Commission. Moving the oversight of the Commission for the Arts from the Innovation and Economic Development Department to the library does not change the makeup or goals and priorities of the commission. The Commission for the Arts worked hard and created an independent and comprehensive strategic plan for Livermore Cultural Arts that was adopted in 2022. This work will continue through the library. The Livermore Cultural Arts vision focuses more on arts programming, and the library currently has extensive cultural arts programming. Library staff also have experience with grants, which is a function of the commission. Converting the Livermore Area Youth Advisory Commission, or LIAC, to a library activity removes a Brown Act requirement to this body. This would enable the body to meet more often in smaller groups, and it would speed up decision-making that is currently limited to monthly meetings. In addition, more youth could participate. Currently, when students contact the city about being on LIAC and there are no seats available, students are encouraged to attend the meetings as members of the public and provide public comment. This rarely occurs. If the body becomes an activity, more youth could be involved, and they could come in and work on a specific project of interest under the leadership of the new body. The library already has extensive youth programming, and this change would complement those programs. There are some minor recommended changes to the remaining body's rules of procedure. For the Airport Commission, it's recommended to increase the number of tenants allowed on the commission from two to three. Previously, the commission set the rental rates for the airport, so having a majority of tenants was a conflict of interest. The commission no longer sets the rental rates. The rates increase based on CPI. This change would allow for a larger pool of applicants for openings on the commission. In the most recent Airport Commission recruitment, the Subcommittee could only fill one of the two vacancies because both applicants were tenants, and there's already a tenant on the commission. This change would have allowed both vacancies to have been filled. For the Human Services Commission, removing the duties related to determining what types of services to be provided at the multi-service center are recommended. Housing and Human Services staff manage the multi-service center and determine which organizations to rent to. For the Library Board of Trustees, it's recommended to remove the duties related to the library budget. Board members can make recommendations for programs at the library, but the library staff manage the budget. Recommended changes for all bodies include changing references from citizens forum to open forum to align with City Council Rules of Procedure and replace references to the City Council Goals and Priorities to the new five-year strategic plan. Finally, having each body create a work plan as directed in the City Council Rules of Procedure will help guide their activities each year to ensure activities are in line with the body's objectives. Advisory Body Liaisons plan to begin this process on creating work plans in January with oversight from the city clerk's office and input from advisory body members. The city values its volunteers and appreciates all the time and effort that is put in by our advisory body members. In front of you is a list of some of the volunteer opportunities available to residents. The first three opportunities, Livermore Community Service Day, Graffiti Fighters, and the Living Arroyos Program are in alignment with some of the duties of the Beautification Committee. Key to the City is an excellent opportunity for residents to learn about the inner workings of the city. For those interested in the Police Department, the Community Police Academy is an option, and for those interested in the Fire Department activities, there's the CERT program. The Livermore Library has extensive volunteer opportunities. Also, there are other advisory bodies that residents can attend meetings for or apply to be on. The Subcommittee is recommending that if a commission is sunset, the members be given priority placement on a new committee if qualified when openings occur. If council approves the recommendation, an ordinance would be brought back to council for approval, as well as a resolution amending the rules of procedure for the remaining bodies. If the council chooses to sunset the Historic Preservation Commission, a development code amendment would need to be heard by the Planning Commission to update the development code, changing references from Historic Preservation Commission to Planning Commission, in addition to the ordinances and resolutions brought forth to council. Staff in the City Council Subcommittee for Advisory Body Review recommend the City Council review the Subcommittee's recommendations regarding changes to city advisory bodies and direct staff to bring back ordinances, amending the Livermore Municipal Code and the Development Code at future meetings. This concludes my presentation, and staff are available for questions.
Public comments?
Hi, I'm Tanya Pianarello, a longtime resident of Livermore and a member of the Beautification Committee since November of 2022. It is a huge mistake to sunset the Beautification Committee. At the very least, please consider alternatives, like maybe combining beautification with the arts or planning advisory boards.
Greg Scott, what you need is more input, not less input. I don't understand why you would sunset these committees.
Good evening, City Council members. My name is Sandra Lormond. I am a member of the Endangered Beautification Committee, and I'm here to speak to you tonight about the proposed elimination of this committee.
Going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the council. What I'd like to do first is hear from the Subcommittee. And that was Councilmember Branning and Vice Mayor Kik.
But first of all, I want to just really make sure that everyone understands I deeply, deeply appreciate the commissions, the commissioners, everyone who volunteers their time. I don't want people to conflate the different ideas that were being conflated up here. And what we're talking about up here is a formalized commission and the structure involved around that, including the limitations and requirements of maintaining a commission, whether or not that is worth the amount of staff time for the output that the commission has. I am a little bit insulted to hear that people think that my views on whether something should be a commission or not relate to my views on whether or not this is something that is a priority to the city. We don't have a bike ped commission. We don't have an environmental review commission. There are many, many things that are vitally important, that are huge priorities to the city that we don't have commissions for. So when we spoke with staff, we were asked, does this serve more good than the cost? Is there another way to accomplish this? And so in our conversations, one of the big things that came up was, are there other ways that we can continue with these values? For beautification, I hope that you don't think it's chutzpah to ask you to continue to be involved when we simply are saying you don't need maintain a monthly meeting that requires a tremendous amount of staff time. So I'd like to ask one question to staff, which is that along with this conversation, although not directly related to the advisory body review, what is the city doing in hopes that we can increase the ability for people to volunteer with the city?
This is your city manager, Mariana Modash. We are working on a number of opportunities for our community to be more involved. We're looking to have a year-round volunteer program that will start with litter pickup as well as graffiti fighting, and there will be additional opportunities. Again, it all comes down to staff. We don't have a citywide volunteer coordinator, but there will be additional opportunities for the public to be involved starting in early of 2024.
My opinion from the Subcommittee, and I'll turn it over to the Vice Mayor, is that the recommendations make sense because it allows the staff to continue working on these projects while enhancing the ability for others to be involved. Where a commission format is unfortunately restrictive in what it actually does, I don't think that the benefits of the commission outweigh the costs.
I'm going to start with a couple of questions. What I am hearing is a lack of understanding on terms and definitions, and so I want to clarify some of those. Jason, can you please clarify what a Brown Act body is?
So Brown Act body applies to any advisory body that is created or formed by the City Council. It can actually include nonprofits that are created by the City Council and funded by the City Council. And if, once those bodies are created, they need to adhere to the requirements imposed by the Brown Act, which require the preparation of a noticed agenda prior to a majority of the members gathering at one point in time to here or make decisions. So once it's a Brown Act body, you're required to have an agenda, and staff is what prepares those.
Okay, so in my understanding, Brown Act bodies take staff time to comply with state law?
Yes, so the city is the one who provides those resources to help prepare those agendas for that advisory body.
Other volunteer opportunities that do not have to follow Brown Act body rules, do not have to prepare those kinds of materials, does not need to take that staff time in order to support city functions and activities?
That would be correct. There may be other needs, but it does not require a noticed agenda or Brown Act compliance.
Brown Act compliance also requires that there is a quorum of individuals present to hold the meeting. Is that correct?
That is correct. In order for the advisory body to take action, it needs to have a quorum present.
So I'm going to focus actually my conversation and comments on LIAC, the Livermore Youth Advisory Committee. Because, one of the reasons I think it's so valuable that it's moving to a library group is because the restrictions placed on LIAC through the Brown Act meant that so often, these young people didn't actually get to meet. If someone didn't show up on time, then, you know, we have our staff calling parents to say, can you pick your kid up? They can't meet because we don't meet quorum. And that's disappointing for students, that's disappointing for staff, and it does limit opportunity. In addition, with these bodies, we have a limited amount of the number of people that can participate. You can have whatever the number that is predetermined, five, seven, allowed on each body. A non-Brown Act volunteer body has unlimited opportunity for people to step in and support and hold leadership roles. So I feel as if there may be a misunderstanding in the intent of this. The limitations of Brown Act bodies take staff time, staff money, limit actual involvement of community members, which is why LIAC moving to the library was kind of just an obvious move, and I think students are excited about that. I feel strongly that the actual tasks of the two commissions that we are recommending to sunset fit nicely in other areas of our community, whether it be having beautification be a focus area or Subcommittee of some sort in the Arts Commission, which is something we had discussed in our Subcommittee meeting. If you're going to have a Brown Act body, it might as well do as much as it possibly can, considering the time constraints, the state regulation constraints. Similarly, with the Historic Preservation Body, we have the ability to edit the role of Planning Commission. I want to make sure that whatever bodies do stick around, that all of the individuals who are unpaid volunteers are giving the utmost respect to the paid staff who are here to make our city run.
I'll start by saying I disagree with sunsetting beautification and HPC. I appreciate the Vice Mayor's conversation about LIAC. To me, that makes sense. I didn't quite understand the subtleties there, or maybe it's not so subtle, but I appreciate her focusing on that at the beginning, and I think to not disappoint the kids that want to participate and being able to include others, I think makes some sense to move LIAC to the library. But I disagree with sunsetting beautification and HPC. If it really is an issue of cost to the staff, maybe there's other ways that we can fulfill the need of considering that. We need more input, not less. And I think the folks that volunteer for those committees offer a valuable service to this community. So I disagree with sunsetting beautification and HPC.
I also agree with Councilmember Carling and Mr. Scott. I think that these are opportunities where the community has the chance to talk to the city. It's an opportunity to provide input, and we want more input, not less. And this is not putting anything against staff, because I certainly appreciate the value and the expertise that staff brings into this. But there's having that additional input. I see real value in the Commission for the Arts and this idea of, well, we've done all the art, most of the stuff we're doing now is programming, and the library is really good at programming, and I understand that. But I look at the funding source for the Commission for the Arts, and a lot of that is one-time money coming in as part of our development fee. If we start moving toward using this one-time money for programming, eventually that programming is going to go away. I see the real value in the Commission for the Arts and the arts being that economic engine.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
Based on what you're saying,
Am I rambling?
No, 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 no. I think you're making the suggestion that it would be only programming. That was not what I got from staff. That is not what I got at all from the messaging. Can you clarify if the Arts Commission moving would take away those one-time public art installations? Or if it would still include that in addition to better support for programming?
Mayor and Vice Mayor, I will start, and if necessary, our Director of Innovation and Economic Development, Brandon, can also jump in. The City Council approved a new cultural art strategic plan not too long ago, and that strategic plan that was developed with the input of the Cultural Arts Commission does make a transition from physical art to more programming. We would not go away from physical art completely, but there was an effort through that work to provide more programming with the commission's input and guidance. And that strategic plan was based on not only conversations with the Cultural Arts Commission, but also the community. The community was looking for more programming, perhaps not less art, but more programming. We were looking, Mr. Mayor, to bring back changes to the cultural arts program that establishes the fee to allow for that flexibility between physical art and programming in alignment with the strategic plan. Staff has had several discussions internally and just felt that there was a lot more connection with that expanded role for the Cultural Arts Commission to focus on additional programming. There was a lot more connection between that new role and what the library is doing with regards to cultural programming, family programming, and so on.
Looking at the Livermore Area Youth Advisory Commission, I was surprised to see that the SATs conflict with this, because I thought the SATs went away. But I understand there's a lot of different things that get in the way of high school students and middle school students. But I think there's ways to get around that.
Can we clarify with Debbie, how did the youth feel about moving to the library? Were they excited or disappointed about moving to a non-Brown Act body? Were they excited or disappointed?
Vice Mayor, they were excited because they could do more things quicker. And then, as far as the leadership role, Mayor, we talked about, they have a lot of subcommittees. For example, their World Fair event.
Right.
And the discussion Monday night was, instead of the Subcommittee doing all the work, the Subcommittee could lead additional youth volunteers for an activity like that, where those students could actually come and participate in the discussion instead of just providing three-minute public comment. So they still want to feel very important to the city, but they were excited to find out that they could do things a little easier. Did I answer your question?
Yeah, I think there was an assumption that having that official title was somehow more important to teenagers, but I think the reality is having those constraints just isn't realistic for eleven- to twenty-one-year-olds.
I find that, I find it interesting that the youth favor the dissolving of the commission.
But it's not dissolving, it's just no longer a Brown Act body.
Yes, so it would still be a group of students that would still have a form of leadership, a chair, a vice chair, that kind of thing. They still would have that. They just would have it under the library and wouldn't be a Brown Act body. So they'd be called something different, but they would still meet and...
What would we call them?
One of the thoughts that the liaison suggested was a youth council instead of a youth commission or youth advisory body.
That I can get behind.
Yeah, so I hear what both Councilmember Carling and Mayor Marshawn, what you're saying about the commissions. And I think this reflects some changes in thinking that might be a little bit different. And it's the idea of structure versus opportunity. And so having a beautification committee provides structure. Having a historic preservation committee provides structure. The Youth Advisory Commission being a Brown Act commission is structured. There is a very hierarchical system involved. There is very much legal, technical ramifications to being a commission. One of the things that Vice Mayor Kik and I, as well as staff, were very, very interested is opportunity. And so looking at a commission in a Brown Act body is a limiting factor in many ways. And the truth of the matter is, if someone has a full-time job and children and is, or is going to school, or is trying to provide for others, the structure of a Brown Act commission is very difficult. When the Vice Mayor and I were discussing this with staff, a large focus of what we discussed was making sure that everything that we're currently doing could continue to be done and could continue to be done well. If we're not Brown Act bodies for these things, for beautification, historic commission, and for the youth, it provides other people the opportunity to be involved. I disagree fundamentally that this is trying to limit people's involvement. I think this makes flexibility a priority versus structure. And so that was one of the major considerations.
I think it would be important to take a look at the traditional makeup of our committees and commissions. Historically, I think we can say that in general, there is an age differential between who tends to be able to serve and who tends to not be able to serve. I think that does have to do with the fact of evening commitments with kids and all these other things, and not wanting to be that person that can't show up and make quorum not happen.
I think structure is exactly what's needed in these. So I guess I disagree with, I think that's very important.
Well, it provides a time and a place to comment.
Exactly.
If you've got a group of volunteers that show up at the library on different days of the week, that isn't going to get you anywhere. If you have a council that doesn't have a specific time or place to meet...
I don't think that's the truth. I think those are false equivalencies, though. We're not saying that they don't have a time or place to meet. We're saying they're not bound by the Brown Act. That's all. They would have a time and a place to meet. They would have a staff liaison. All of those things are true. Can we just vote? Because I have a feeling we're going to end at two-two, and we're going to have to continue this conversation.
It's two-two. It just stays the way it is, right?
Yes.
So nothing changes.
Right.
So I would say then that I would like everyone to be on the record. So first question, I'd like to move the entirety of staff recommendations.
I second.
Okay, it's moved by Councilmember Branning, seconded by Vice Mayor Kik. To accept staff recommendation, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay.
No, no, it'd be no.
No. No.
All opposed? No. There you go. Okay.
The original motion sunsets beautification and historic preservation commission. This one does not. To be more specific, to make sure it's consistent with everyone pulling up the sunsetting recommendation for them, but still updating the language involved, such as open forum versus citizens forum, things like that. The language changes to the rules and procedures, but not sunsetting the two commissions.
I had a question for the library, unfortunately, but what's their bandwidth? I mean, that's dumping a lot of stuff onto the library, because the library is already pretty busy. And I hear complaints that they want additional resources placed around the city and not everything being focused just at the main library.
Mr. Mayor, we are working on a plan to potentially increase one of the administrative positions at the library to help with this new commission, a new-to-them commission. We have been having these discussions with the library director and staff for a few months, so there will be capacity and more capacity than the small department of innovation and economic development.
Was the recommendation that was given to staff, was that run by library staff and economic development?
Yes, Vice Mayor, that recommendation has been discussed for the last few months between innovation and economic development and the library. And it was pursuant to the change that occurred with cultural arts around the strategic plan. So when that strategic plan with more focus on programming was approved, we started having discussions between economic development and the library.
So just to check, while we also have a motion on the table, but was there a reason we formed a Subcommittee?
Yes, you suggested it.
I did, and we agreed it was a good idea. And I believe now you're suggesting that every recommendation from it, including the ones from us spending a few months working on it and from staff, are not worth it. So we have a motion on the table.
Excuse me, I thought the LIAC one was on.
So we do have a motion on the table.
Okay, so you had a motion on the table for not sunsetting historic preservation and beautification.
But moving all other staff recommendations.
And that's LIAC art. Okay, then we'll call the question. All in favor? See if I was saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No. Is there? All right. Let me try one more here. I will agree, so we will keep HPC. We will keep the beautification commission. And I would be willing to move the LIAC to the library. All of the other recommendations, moving art to the library, I'm sorry, keeping the art commission in economic development and approving the rest of the language.
Do you think it's appropriate to maybe ask for economic development's thought on that?
Maybe we need to put more resources into economic development.
Okay, okay. I have a question for staff then. If we decide to keep arts under economic development, will we get more staff in economic development, like the staff that you have discussed increasing in the library?
Vice Mayor, we could certainly contemplate that during the next budget. The budget is currently balanced. I would have to pull a position from another department to give it to economic development. But certainly, when we discuss our next annual budget, we could, and we, as a matter of fact, discussed giving specialized position to support cultural arts to a department, not knowing where this discussion would go. That position, however, is not likely to be available until a couple of years from now, which is given where we are in the budget. But those are the discussions that we can be and will be having the next time we review our budget.
Okay, I'll be straight up and ask. Brandon, okay, help me here. You have a phenomenal department. We're doing great things. Do you see the arts as an economic engine that we can use? Or do you think that that would be better staffed in the library? Or do you think that that would be a better staff in the library?
So this recommendation is an outgrowth of the Cultural Arts Framework, Creative Livermore, in which the vast majority of the public input on what the community desires for arts investments is in programming and specifically youth and family programming. And the library, I think, is the greatest distribution mechanism that we have for reaching youth and family, because it's the business that they're in constantly. And they also already have a significant body of arts and culture programming that they're involved in through crafts and multicultural activities and a whole number of things. I think conceptually, the arts can be a great economic engine. I think that the investments required to achieve that kind of outcome from art spending at the municipal level are likely higher than we are making today. To your point about New Orleans, New Orleans and the former mayor obviously has something of a different arts profile in terms of what they're doing at the city level. And so I think our intention was to have more intersection between public art offerings in the community and the staff that is more accustomed to that kind of program development and implementation. And with the Arts Alcove already being present at the library, it seemed like there was some consistency and overlap in that. So to answer your question directly, yes, I do think that arts can be an important component of an economic development strategy. And I also don't believe that if it were to move to the library, that my department, the Innovation and Economic Development Department, would stop pursuing arts and culture as a potential means of tourism and visitation. It's just that the core business of the Art Commission, which is public art acquisition, installation, and maintenance, grants administration, and program development would be done under a different departmental structure. I hope that was helpful.
I'll hold you to that.
Okay.
I'll hold you to that. Yeah, as you know, the arts are extremely dear to me.
Absolutely.
And-
To that point, Mayor, one of the recommendations that came out of the Creative Livermore Framework was this emphasis on a signature annual event that was rooted in the context of the community. I think that's something we still would want to pursue through my department because of the emphasis on tourism and visitation. We partnered with Visit Tri Valley on their cultural heritage and asset-based tourism. So it's something we're very interested in still. It's more that the commission and its work would transition, not that all arts would leave the Innovation and Economic Development Department.
Okay, with that, I understand this is why democracy works. You guys, we're seeing sausage being made right here. So with that, and in hearing from the experts that we depend upon, and we will revisit this. But I will keep Historic Preservation, we'll keep the Beautification Committee. Okay, I will so move.
Second.
So to be clear, I think it is moving staff recommendations excluding the sunsetting of the two committees and removing the change from three tenants to two, keeping it at two.
Okay.
All other changes, upper.
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay, so that is my motion. It's been seconded by Councilmember Carling. Staff is clear on the motion? Okay, all in favor of the motion? See if I was saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We got there. All right, all right. Very good. Thank you so much. Great discussion. This was not easy. So with that, happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and best wishes to everybody for the new year. Thank you.